All right, welcome everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we do have the sign-in sheet. If you're here to speak on any of the public hearing items, you don't have to sign up. We have Chuck signed up to speak on a bill, but is there anyone else that was here that didn't get a chance to sign up? So I can make sure you did. Is it on one of the public hearings? Okay, so you're fine. If it's a public hearing, so if it's anything under item five, A, B, or C, any of the rezonings, you don't have to sign up, but just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Okay. All right. Well, before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer led by Councilwoman Laura Ward, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and for gathering us all here safely this evening. As 2018 comes to an end, thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon our city. Please bring comfort to all those who may be experiencing loss or hardships this holiday season. We thank you for all of our talented and dedicated city staff, especially our first responders, firefighters, and police officers who sacrifice for us each day. Please keep them and our armed forces safe as they and their families sacrifice to protect us. Guide us as public servants to represent the needs of everyone in our city fairly and responsibly. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Welcome everyone to the Monday, December 17th, 2018 City Council meeting. A roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption of agenda adding item four C, recognition of Judge Cotton Walker.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items, we will start with recognizing Sheila Perry and Karasanki for the Caffer and Paffer awards. So we're pleased to receive those awards and Mr. Kroll and Margie Miller.
And I will ask the Director of Information Technology and Finance, Margie Miller, to come forward. Finance Information Technology Director, and she can introduce the others.
We want to recognize Sheila Perry, our Chief Accountant, and Karasanki, our Senior Accountant.
So, the city is once again recipient of two awards from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. One is for our comprehensive financial audit, which is the major audit that we do for the city, and the other is for the popular financial audit that gives some general summary information about the audit. So, both of those awards are very significant, and I don't really know what year this is. Do you know offhand?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeenth year of getting that. So, it really involves a lot of...
This is for year 2017.
Oh, 2017. But you know how many years we've received it? I don't know offhand. Twenty-three? Okay. That's a long time. But it involves a lot of work by finance and certainly Department Director. So, the two awards we're gonna give to... Let me give that to them? All right. So, one for the comprehensive and one for the popular. And thank you very much for all the work.
Well, thank you for all you do, and even though we have received these awards so often, it's definitely not something to take for granted, the amount of work that goes in to receive them. So, the council and all of us on behalf of the City Council appreciate you continuing to strive for the excellence to receive these awards. And if you could, let's come forward, we'll get a picture with your awards, and have City Council get behind me and get a photograph with them.
One, two, three.
And we are recognizing the outstanding employee service of the people of Jefferson City.
And I will ask Fire Chief Schofield to come forward, please, and Fire Engineer Ryan Locke to come forward, please. So congratulations to Ryan Locke, City of Jefferson Fire Engineer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for December 2018. This recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form, but also in recognition of all the service Mr. Locke provides to the citizens of the City of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. So some of the items referenced in Mr. Locke's nominations include the following. Mr. Locke provides excellent customer service on a consistent basis. He has the quote "heart to serve others" end quote. Mr. Locke serves as a member on the Jefferson City Fire Department Grant Committee. Through his most recent efforts, the department was awarded a grant for health and wellness. This grant had a federal dollar value of over $162,000. Department employees and the community will benefit from the improved employee health and wellness resulting from the grant. Over the past five years, Mr. Locke has been directly involved in securing over $676,000 in grant funding. Mr. Locke is always professional in his interaction with others. Mr. Locke always has a bright outlook and works well with employees and citizens of Jefferson City, making him a person you look forward to working with and being around, end quote. Mr. Locke has taken on other projects in addition to his traditional firefighter duties and responsibilities. Mr. Locke exemplifies the fire department motto "Serve people, shield property, save lives." Mr. Locke's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the city are recognized and appreciated. So congratulations and thanks to Ryan Locke, City of Jefferson Fire Engineer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for December 2018. And I think there's a little bit of a fan club here. Some others? Did you have some family members too?
I do. All right, I've got my three daughters here. Mia, Nora, and Ellen. I've got my wife here, Katie.
Great. Some others? Some other folks?
Yeah. My mother-in-law Patty, Dee-ho, and my mom, Tom.
We're so proud of what Ryan does, and we appreciate the work of all firefighters certainly. Thank you.
We are. We really appreciate your service.
Little gift for you.
Thank you. And you really put yourself above others every day when you come to work, and we appreciate your outstanding service to the City of Jefferson. So, on behalf of the city, I'd like to present you some gift certificates and a special city coin, and would love to get a photograph together here. So if you'd like to invite your family up, and then also your firefighter family as well, we can get a picture up here together. So, and council can come on up here.
Let's go.
I can push forward again then.
Is that gonna be enough?
Yep.
Okay, everybody ready? One, two, three. Okay.
Actually, all of our firefighters are leaving, but I feel like we should do a quick... Should we show... They've probably seen this before. Okay, they've seen this. So, all right, well, I'm gonna get a little personal with everybody in the room, and I want to ask the question, how many of you sleep with your doors closed? Doors closed? Or open? How about it open? Okay. Well, I learned something that Jason Turner told me, and I really didn't think it was a big deal, but there's this thing called "Close before you doze," so I want to share that. It's only appropriate recognizing a firefighter this evening, and so I've asked Chief Schofield to share this with us this evening, too.
Yeah, the video is really well done, and it speaks very well for itself. So I think we'll just go ahead and start the video. And it's a short video, put out by UL. And once we get the audio up, get a little more audio. Underwriters Laboratory has been doing a lot of research over the last few years, and as part of that process, we've learned a lot about fire behavior, and this is one of those things.
I'll let Steve take it away. Well, my job is to be able to study how fires can spread, and we can teach them this. Here at Jefferson Fire Service, we try to find a room that's at a certain place in the labyrinth, and we've got several sharpens around it that we build to simulate where you live. And one of those structures is right here in the library. What I want you to do is that we're going to go inside here, and I want you to see how this looks like your home. And then once we get to outside, we can go ahead and recreate what would happen if a fire was in the structure. Pretty normal. And with permission, no letters can come down here. As we walk down, this bedroom door will be closed, and one of the end of the hall will be opened. And what I want you to do is if you can hear some of those, and think about where you're trying to survive. All right, and just in the bottom, we have the mission. For a lot of people who realize is that the furnishings that are open today aren't as synthetic. So they burn so much natural material, natural cotton filled furnishings, and the statistics that you've seen through our research is in about forty years ago, you had about seventeen minutes of damage to your house, and it's not more than that. And you have lost three years. All right, but it knocks down. All right, and if you remember, close the door on the left, open the door on the right. You can see the dramatic fire that takes me through the middle of the corridor. We want people to be as prepared as possible, and it's important to have the time you have, and want that simple barrier to revise when you're in a position to fight. I want you guys to go to the front, and it's on the safety glass. Do you come to the windows, or do you walk from hallway to the door? Do you need order, please, Mr. Rock?
I'm fine.
Terrible. I really need to talk to you. Now, I want to ask you one last thing. If you're safe, we're still going to go. Without doubt, we're close.
Definitely, we're close. No warning, no risks. That's why we're here.
Close.
Definitely close. That's why I'm here.
It's always great to be able to get a message out, and we can make our research, and get it out in the community, and change behavior. And that's what we're doing, we're closing doors, and illustrating openly with the safe house. There was one good advice that we could give to anyone there. Before you go.
Before you go.
Before you go.
Before you go.
Before you go. Before you go. Keep fire safety messages low, people have. One, have more people with arms at every level of your home, inside and outside. You want everybody to have a speaking power, so you have a fire, you know how to fight quickly. And if you're taking out quickly, having a closed door is moving where that fire is critical.
Thank you, Chief, for sharing this video, and appreciate Jason Turner for bringing it to my attention and getting the message out. And frankly, I was completely surprised, and I really was not a believer, even though he said how important it was. So, you deal with this every day, though, with your firefighters and fires that you deal with?
Yeah, and I would just mention that that video is also on our Facebook page. You can access it there. And it actually is tied in a unique way to our performance measures. One of the... A nod to the Finance Department and the Budget Awards. One of our areas of evaluation is a performance indicator of keeping a fire contained in the room of origin. And so for us, it's a big deal, not only to prevent fire spread, but also to protect occupants inside of a home, to keep those doors closed, and slow down the fire's path.
So it doesn't even just apply to a bedroom door. What you're saying is it can apply to other doors in the home.
That's correct. If the fire originates in a room that has a closed door, it's going to spread much more slowly, and give us time to get in there and put the fire out.
Great. Well, thank you for that message, and as all of us are spending time with our friends and families throughout the holidays, hopefully we can also spread the message of "Close before you doze." And it's something that I was frankly surprised about, like they said in the video, and after seeing the comparison side by side, it really does make a difference. And I always thought, well, you want to be able to get out quicker, and you want the door open, so I was... But that has changed my mind in hearing your message. You are the experts, and you know, and I should listen to you, but now after seeing the video, it sure brings a different perspective. So, so now we will all tonight "Close before you doze," right? Head nods there, yes. So, any questions for Chief? All right. Well, it's nice to tie that in with our recognition, too. It was good timing, so thank you for sharing that with us. All right, now on to item C. We have a special recognition for Judge Cotton Walker. So we would like to invite Cotton to the podium. And welcome. I know you've spent a lot of times actually here in this seat.
Excellent. We are sitting out here. Waiting for your name if you call. I was applying patient.
Well, we are glad to have you, and you have served us very well for several years. In fact, from April 18th of 2011. So you've served for quite a while here, and we really do appreciate all of the time and effort and the respect that you bring with you every day, and the positive influence that you've had on so many that have come to this courtroom. So, if you'd like to say a few words into the mic, we'd love to hear from you as well.
Thank you. I didn't prepare any comments, but I do in that chair what you all do here each week, and that's just do the best I can and be diligent about it. I appreciate the support from the council and the mayor and the city administrator to provide a new courtroom, which really serves the community well. I know that part of the motivation was to reclaim a part of this building and this courtroom, especially for... In this council room for Wednesdays, which is our primary court day, but truly, it's a nice facility for the community, for those who do come to court. And sure, it helps those in the community who come to do other city business on those days, too. But, and though I don't think any of them are here, it's also fantastic move for the court staff, my three quarter administrators who work hard, and we're kind of in this cage, in this little building, in this little office, the space they have, to serve the public with two windows, so they can really address it in a fair and efficient manner is appreciated. So, and I'm sorry that I'm leaving that courtroom, so...
Well, we sincerely congratulate you. We would...
Thank you.
We're really gonna miss you and the service that you've provided here to the City of Jefferson, but we're all so proud of you and happy for you and your new venture. So you will take office, I believe, Friday. Is that correct?
Well, I'll be sworn in Friday, but not effective till January 1st. So, yeah. I'll have a docket Wednesday and Friday in the courtroom, and then that'll be the last court, because we don't have Court Christmas Week down here, so, yeah.
Great. Well, we all sincerely congratulate you, and thank you for your service. And I have a special plaque of recognition. It says "Judge Cotton Walker in recognition of outstanding service to the people of the City of Jefferson, April 18th, 2011 to December 21st, 2018. Mayor Kerry Turgeon and City Council, City of Jefferson, with the key to the city" on there. So you can have this with you, and we would love to get a picture with you, and then you have some family members here if you'd like to...
Yeah, I'll introduce. I have my cousin Ashley Engel and my Aunt Lynn Engel, who of course are the widow and daughter of a former municipal judge and councilperson, Clyde Engel. So, that has special memory. And actually, that's why we're doing the swearing in on the 21st, because they travel Christmas Week. So, instead of doing it right at the end of the year, like many others, so... And then I have my son Quinn, who's a sophomore at Jefferson City High School. My daughter Jaclyn, who's a sophomore at Southeastern Louisiana University, and my wife Deborah. So, thank you very much.
Well, we're happy to have you all here, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So come on up, and we'll get a picture.
Come on, she'll get up to you.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, you are fine.
Congratulations.
We have item A, Bill 2018-78.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 2.69 acres located in the 2700 block of Route CC from RU Rural to C2 General Commercial.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This property is located, as highlighted up on the screen, toward the top of the screen, along the top edge is Missouri Route C Highway, and then through the middle of the screen is Highway 179 going north to south. So this is the intersection of Route C and Highway 179. Now, the property is located, has frontage on Route CC, which intersects with Route C right there at a stoplight. It's 2.69 acres, currently zoned in RU, which is a rural or agricultural zoning district. This bill would rezone this property from that RU category to a C2 general commercial zoning category. The applicant for this request is actually the property owner just to the east of the property, the owner of the Green Horizons Garden Center. That's a business that's been located there for many years. The purpose of the request is to... That property owner is looking at purchasing this property, and the purpose of the request is to get the property rezoned, so it matches the business property. This item was... This property was part of the 2007 annexation, the Capitol Hills Route C voter-approved annexation. Within the plan of intent of that annexation, there was language basically referencing that the intersection of Route C and Highway 179 is ideal for commercial development. And so that's one item that was taken into consideration during staff's review of this rezoning proposal. One other item I'd point out is the current RU zoning of the property. When the property was annexed, there was no specific plans for the property as part of a farm, and so the RU zoning is basically what we refer to as a base zoning district. There were no other plans for the property, and staff did not make any attempts to propose a commercial rezoning plan for that intersection, even though the annexation plan of intent identified that it's an ideal location for commercial development. This item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their November 8th meeting, was recommended for approval by them on a vote of five to two. I believe the applicant's consultant is here, and might be able to provide additional information on that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing for 2018-78. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the bill? Welcome, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Paul Sampson, Central Missouri Professional Services, and I'm here tonight to represent Mr. Rick Pennow, the owner of Green Horizons Garden Center. As Eric said, the proposal is to rezone approximately 2.7 acres from RU to C2. When Mr. Pennow originally had submitted his rezoning application, the original plan was to purchase and rezone approximately six acres. During the planning and zoning process, there were some concerns raised by some of the folks that live on the west side of Route CC. So, based on those comments, he reduced the proposed purchase and rezoning from six acres to the 2.7 that we're talking about tonight. Green Horizons has been in operation at this location since the mid-1990s. With the construction of the 179 intersection in the early 2000s, the character of this area has changed significantly. Mr. Pennow lost approximately nine acres of ground when the highway was built, which required a significant change to his operation. To make up for losing the property, Mr. Pennow's always been interested in purchasing this property to the west, and after some time, that property has now become available. As Mr. Barron said, the property is really surrounded on three sides by state routes, on the north by Route C, on the west by CC, and on the east by Highway 179. So, given that situation in relation to the highways, it's really an ideal commercial property. Mr. Pennow has no plans, immediate plans at this time to expand the operation, but just wants to have the property that he's purchasing rezoned to be consistent with the remainder of his property. In some of the correspondence during the planning and zoning hearing, there were some concerns about the potential uses of the property. Of course, we don't know what those potential uses... Of course, we don't know what those potential uses might be, but any development of the property would have to meet current zoning code, including setbacks, buffer yards, traffic impact studies, and land use. Another factor that may potentially affect the future use of the property is the fact that it's quite a distance to the nearest sanitary sewer connection. It's about a half a mile away, so without some significant investment, the redevelopment of this would be somewhat limited, given the distance to the sewer line. So we think that impacts to adjacent properties will be pretty minimal. That's all I've got, and we appreciate your support for the proposal.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Sampson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 2018-78? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing process, and we will take up Bill 2018-78.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 2.69 acres located in the 2700 block of Route CC from RU Rural to C2 General Commercial.
Any further counsel, Kinselman-Hussy?
I just have a question for Mr. Barron. Excuse me, given like the feedback from some of the adjacent properties and no immediate plans for development, was there staff consideration given to actually rezoning this as a PUD to sort of alleviate that? Sanitary sewer is a ways away. I think the concern of the neighboring properties is a commercial development that doesn't conform with their kind of residential area and their unknown status of what might happen there on this property. It seems like a lot of times when rezonings come our way, there's a plan in place for what's gonna happen on that particular site, and in this case, we don't necessarily have that. So I don't know if you had conversations or if that was consideration from staff's perspective.
It would be a difficult thing for this particular instance, because they don't have any plans right now, and so a PUD rezoning really necessitates a development plan being attached to that proposal. So it'd be kind of difficult to rezone it to a PUD category without any kind of plan in place to go along with that. The PUD zoning district is an extremely restrictive zoning district. You know, in general, I would say that the staff's preference and believe it to be the right way to pursue zoning matters is to try to stick within the standard zoning districts, except in those situations where very specific concerns or mixed uses or other unique things really necessitate a PUD route. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. I guess in the absence of a plan for the site then, is there concern on your end about rezoning without something in place for what might happen at this particular site?
I believe that the other protections within the zoning code, buffer yards, setbacks, things such as that, are those built-in protections for surrounding properties. If those are not strong enough, then, you know, certainly a discussion on, you know, on looking at those to see if they're accomplishing what they're meant to. So the existing protections within the zoning code should protect surrounding property. In this case, the one property, the C1 zoned property, which is adjacent to this, being commercially zoned wouldn't really be protected by buffer yards, because it's a residential property on a, you know, residential use on commercial zoning. And I think that was the main concern that came out at the Planning and Zoning Commission level.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or counsel deliberation? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Nay.
Hussey.
Nay.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item B, we have Bill 2018-79.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 22 acres generally described as a portion of the area south of Dunkland Street, east of Madison Street, north of Hickory Street, and west of Lafayette Street, consisting of 96 property parcels from RA2 multifamily residential, C2 general commercial, and RD residential duplex to RS4 single-family residential.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a large area rezoning, as the clerk read, consists of 22 acres and total of 96 different properties. Up on the screen are the boundaries of the area, shown in yellow. Note that they are separated, there's two different areas, one much larger area and then a smaller area over here to the right. Now, the majority of the area is zoned an RA2, a multifamily residential zoning district, although the satellite area over on the right is zoned an RD, which is a duplex zoning category. And then there is a small amount of C2 general commercial zoning located right there. This bill would implement a rezoning plan that would rezone all of the property within the yellow boundaries to an RS4, a single-family residential zoning district. I'll note that there are four properties that are specifically left out of this rezoning proposal, and each of them are outlined in the dotted yellow lines. Three of these properties are existing apartment buildings that were built for that purpose, built as apartment buildings, and then one property is a small commercial business. The reason those four properties were left out of this proposal is that the rezoning to a single-family category would conflict to a large degree with their existing use and the, you know, the style of building that they are. This is a staff-initiated proposal. It is a recommendation that comes out of the Old Munichburg South Side Neighborhood Plan. Up on the screen is the land use plan component of that neighborhood plan. This plan basically outlines the recommended land use across the entire neighborhood. This is a zoomed-in portion of that with the boundaries of the proposed rezoning area highlighted in black. And so the main color here is the tan color, basically represents that the plan recommends that that property be used as a single-family residential type of land use. And so this rezoning proposal, this downzoning from the existing zoning districts to single-family residential, would be in support of that plan. Staff did conduct a land use study for this area. Up on the screen is the results of that study. The two primary colors that I'll point out are the green and the red. First, the green are properties that were identified as being currently used as single-family residential homes. The red properties are properties that were identified as being former, being originally built as a single-family home, but converted at some time in the past to a multiple unit or multiple family type of use. And of course, those conversions were legal, as the area is currently zoned a multifamily residential category, and so converting a home to multiple units is a legal conversion. Staff did conduct a neighborhood meeting, informational meeting, for people within the neighborhood on October 30th, and this item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of November 8th. They did recommend for approval of this rezoning plan on a vote of seven to zero. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you, are there any questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 2018-79? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing process, and we will take up Bill 2018-79.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 22 acres generally described as a portion of the area south of Dunkland Street, east of Madison Street, north of Hickory Street, and west of Lafayette Street, consisting of 96 property parcels from RA2 multifamily residential, C2 general commercial, and RD residential duplex to RS4 single-family residential.
All right, any further counsel discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-82.
In ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Command Web Offset Company Incorporated, a Missouri corporation consisting of the acquisition and installation of certain personal property and equipment at the company's manufacturing facility, authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Series 2018, in a principal amount not to exceed $34,250,000 to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, we heard from the chamber and I believe the plant manager for Command Web to give some details on this particular project. This evening, we have Hayden Crumpton with the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is acting as bond counsel on this deal, and he's here to provide any further detail and answer any questions that the council has. But essentially, this is a Chapter 100 industrial development deal where the city and other taxing districts will provide tax abatement to support an expansion of the Command Web operations on the east side of town. So with that, Mr. Crumpton would be able to address any questions that the council has.
Okay, thank you. Before we open the public hearing, does council have any questions for Mr. Moulman? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for 2018-82, and would invite you to come speak, or if anybody, would you like to say anything about the project, or?
I think, Madam Mayor and council, I think Mr. Moulman covered it perfectly, so I'm here to answer any questions anybody may have. Is Mr. Moulman willing to result in property tax abatement for certain equipment machinery that's gonna be purchased by Command Set, Command Offset at their expansion of the facility?
Great, and we had a very detailed presentation at the last meeting as well, so does council have any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 2018-82? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up the bill.
In ordinance approving a plan of an industrial development project for Command Web Offset Company Incorporated, a Missouri corporation consisting of the acquisition and installation of certain personal property and equipment at the company's manufacturing facility, authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Series 2018, in a principal amount not to exceed $34,250,000 to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Any further counsel discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Hensley.
I abstain.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Bill passes, and thank you for being here also. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have a slate of appointees for boards and commissions, and you will note that one of those does require two-thirds majority for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Is there a motion to approve? And Gail, do you have anything to add to that, Mrs. Strope?
No, I'd just like to mention that all of the appointments are for three-year terms.
Okay, thank you. Any further counsel discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and as always, we thank those who serve our boards and commissions. Item B, appointment of the temporary municipal judge, which we would typically take place at this time, and I sent something out to council last night to let them know that we will not be making that appointment at this time, and have taken the feedback from council members that prefer to wait until after the election filing period has closed on January 15th before we proceed with filling the temporary municipal judge position. And so I had chosen Mrs. Angela Sylvie to fill the position, and then she filed on the first day of filing for the municipal judge position. So I will not be making that motion, and instead, we will have, or will not be making that appointment, instead, we will have our substitute judge, Mr. Curtis Hanran, who is, who we usually would typically have if Cotton is unavailable, on that rare occasion that Mr. Hanran can fill in. So he has agreed to fill in and be our substitute judge until after the filing period has closed, and then we will take it up at that time. And then I'll share with you also, Mrs. Sylvie sent note to us that says, or she says, "Dear Mayor Turgeon, thank you for the confidence you have shown in me by selecting me as your choice for interim municipal judge. As a local attorney with a desire to have a positive impact on my community, I look forward to joining you in city government as the municipal judge in April after the election. However, I must decline the interim appointment at this time. Thank you again, and I look forward to joining you in April when I can give my full attention to the court. Sincerely, Angela Sylvie." So I wanted to share that and ask if there are any questions of council on item B? All right, and we do appreciate Mr. Hanran for filling in in his substitute position, and also appreciate Angela and her understanding as well, and her letter. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, oh wait, I skipped over you, and you've been sitting here so patiently. I didn't mean to do that. Okay, item seven, let me back up, we have Diane Gillespie here, Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, to give us the budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I am here to present our 2019 budget, which you should have in front of you, and I'm just gonna highlight a few of the items. Revenue, some of the items that are included in our revenue section is the room tax, which is a 2% increase for 2019. Some of the other items that fall in that is the co-op program that's through the Missouri Division of Tourism. If you will note that there is a major increase of 66% proposed for 2019. Division of Tourism received a $10 million cut in their budget last year, and so that impacted our co-op program. Some of that was refunded, and they are hoping to get more into the future budget, so we will see that coming back to us in 2019. Also included that is our prison tour ticket sales, which is $572,000, which is a 6.82% increase, MSP museum admission, $28,000, which is a 7.69% increase, and our promotional items, which is $87,210, and that's a 2% increase. So an overall increase in our revenue being proposed of 5.03%. So the other items is, you go into our payroll expenses, which is a 3.31% increase, and that includes our staff wages and benefits. Going to administrative and general expenses, we're at a 4.49%, which is about 10.18% of our overall budget, so we do try to keep those expenses down. Marketing expenses, right now, we are setting at $720,548 in marketing expenses, which a 3.5% increase over 2018, and that is 57.5% of our overall budget. The average for a CVB our size is 40 to 45%, so we do try to keep as much in the marketing as possible, because that's what we're here for. Some of the items that are in the marketing also include our MSP tour expenses. So if there's any questions on any of that, I'd be glad to answer those at the time. So our overall budget is 1.253861. Questions?
Mrs. Gillespie, at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, you do an outstanding job on a very small staff, and each of you works very hard in all areas of the CVB, when it comes to, of course, the prison, marketing, and tours, and the increase there exponentially every year, when it comes to the sports tourism that we have in our community, highlighting our hotels, highlighting events, your updates to your website. our hotels, highlighting events, your updates to your website. You've all really stepped up, and I know you also have with you Mrs. Carol Burkhead as well, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, who does the finance.
Yes, Carol is with Burkhead and Associates, and has been the accountant for the CVB for a long time. So she is here if you need detailed information.
Great.
Thank you.
And then our liaison is Councilman Rick Mahalovich.
And I would say that our auditor is at every meeting and presents the financials in a way that it's understandable by the board, and I feel real comfortable about what the presentation is before us.
Great. Does council have any questions on, or comments on the presentation? Councilman Hussey?
It's a minor question. I noticed under dues and subscriptions, we pay for a chamber membership, and I guess my statement would be that as the contracted economic development entity, and a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars coming from the city to the chamber, it seems like maybe we should push the chamber to just include a membership for CVB. In that instance, since they're so integral with economic development in this community, I'm not going to make you make a statement on that, Ms. Gillespie.
Thank you.
It's just from my perspective, like, I saw that, and it jumped out of me like, there's a lot of money flowing already.
Good point.
It seems like maybe we could push in our contract that that would be a throw-in for the CVB. I'll just, I'll let you off.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilman Schreiber?
Mrs. Gillespie, I have the privilege to work with you and your staff on a very frequent basis, particularly with the MSP project, and I just want to thank you for your professionalism and the openness that everyone has had there, and I think we're very fortunate to have the staff that you have, as well as yourself, and I know that Ms. Burkhead, equally, I worked with her on other projects, and she's always been a great person to work with, and I want to thank you very much for that.
We have a very good staff, from the CVB to the MSP staff, that are very dedicated to the mission of promoting Jefferson City and the MSP project, so we do like what we do.
Thank you, and something that we've also added to the mayor's budget, there's very few things I've added into the city budget, but one thing that council approved that we're very thankful for are some improvements to MSP, and this year, for those of you who haven't seen the lights outside of MSP, which are very historic lights that Councilman Schreiber, I believe, somewhat rediscovered and were able to put back into use, but they are outstanding and really highlights, I know you do a lot of night tours and ghost tours, so.
We do. The lights have helped the front entrance tremendously, and we've had a lot of very positive comments about it, and that is part of the agreement, just so you know, that the net profits that we make off the tours, after it covers the expenses, goes into the preservation of MSP. So we're currently working with OA on four other projects, that they're kind of doing some research on costs that we will be announcing here in the future.
Great. Any further questions or discussion? Next, we'll take up the resolution approving the budget, but before we let you leave, I will mention that the tours will resume again in March.
Correct.
But for Christmas gifts, you can buy.
We have gift certificates, and we have items to purchase. We have hoodies, we have, I did time, and all kinds of things, and Mark has a book over there that we can also promote, so.
There you go. So if you're looking for something to put in the stocking.
Come over and see us, we need some last-minute Christmas gifts.
Imagine getting that in your stocking, so that would be naughty or nice. I don't know if you get a prison tour in your stocking.
Kind of depends.
Could be either way, okay.
Kind of depends.
So be sure to consider that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B will take up Resolution twenty eighteen twenty-four.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson approving the twenty nineteen budget of the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mrs. Miller, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
All right, resolution passes, and congratulations. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I will start with my announcements. We will be closing City Hall on Christmas Eve. It's hard to believe we're approaching Christmas already, so kind of in, really in following the governor's lead and appreciating what he chose to do with the state, we will be closing City Hall on Christmas Eve, and I would encourage people to check the city's website or call other city facilities, just so they're aware. I will mention that Transit is open, it will be operating until three-twenty on Monday Christmas Eve, and that will be the same schedule for Transit. They will also operate until three-twenty on Monday, New Year's Eve, so please make arrangements for Transit. The animal shelter will be closed on Christmas Eve, so if you're thinking of adopting a pet, I know they would not advise you to wait till the day of anyway, so they would prefer that you put thought into that and come early, so certainly do that ahead of time, because the animal shelter will be closed Christmas Eve as well. And the link will be open until around two, I believe, on Christmas Eve, so get your last-minute workout before two o'clock on Monday, Christmas Eve. So check the website again for closings or calls, so. And I have a couple other announcements. One is the Salvation Army, as you know, I brought my kettle last time, The Art of the Red Kettle, there's four of us that have decorated kettles, and that meeting that you were absent, Councilman Mahalovich, five-hundred-dollar bid, I hate to say, but you've been outbid. So it has been raised, Lieutenant Governor Keigho took your five-hundred, and he raised it now to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so he has the high bid now, so you are outbid.
No, Madam Mayor, that was not a bid, that was a pledge. That was not a bid.
Uh-oh, Carlos.
That was five-hundred out of his pocket, it had nothing to do with no pledge, no bid.
Oh, well.
That was a pledge.
Here we go.
So we need your check for five-hundred.
Okay, well, it all goes for the Salvation Army, and if anyone is interested in giving to The Art of the Red Kettle, they can call the Salvation Army, six-three-five, nineteen-seventy-five. So we have my special kettle, but also if you look in the lobby of City Hall, we have some artwork, I believe the one out there now is from somebody who works at Salvation Army, and we also have Roberta Dinkle and John Sheehan and his wife Barbara have decorated one, and I think it would be really cool if each of those four kettles could bring in a thousand dollars for Salvation Army, I think it'd be really, really cool, Carlos, or whoever would like to, I know what, there's about to be a motion made over here, what goes around, comes around, but it is the holidays, but I just appreciate all who give, not only to Salvation Army, but to all of the worthy organizations here in Jefferson City that need our help, so please consider giving somewhere during the holidays. And lastly, don't forget to close before you doze. So I hope that you had a chance, please share the video if you can, and definitely take that to heart, because we want everybody to be as safe as possible, it certainly was eye-opening to me, and I hope to many others, so close before you doze. With that, are there any other council announcements? Nothing? All right, well, check our website for meeting calendar and event schedule. Item nine, it is Christmas break, so Carolyn is off on Christmas break. Is there anything you can think of to report on Lincoln, just Christmas break at the moment? Okay, and then item ten, we have presentations from the galleries on specific bills, we have, nobody signed up this evening for that.
We have one for specific bills.
Oh, we are on specific, I'm sorry, okay, we do. Mr. Chuck LaMire has signed up for Bill twenty eighteen eighty-one. Welcome, Mr. LaMire.
I'm Chuck LaMire, address six-three-one-nine Rolling Road, which is outside the city limits, I should mention, but my heart is in Jeff City. I grew up here, went through school here, went to college nearby, and my sympathies are very much with Jeff City. I'm here to speak on Bill twenty eighteen eighty-one, which is one step along the way to developing Adrian's Island. It seems this bill has to do with the development of the park on Adrian's Island. I mentioned I grew up here, and I am old enough to remember when there was no Adrian's Island. Mark Schreiber might as well, he used to be able to walk right down to the riverbank and throw a stone in the river. It seems to me the city is being offered a couple of gifts here, the first being Adrian's Island, offered by Mother Nature. Mother Nature had a little help, the Corps of Engineers built these wing dikes that helped collect the sediment and an island built up. I remember seeing the island grow up, it was a sandbar at first, and then a lawn of things sprouted on it, and I said, "What is that?" It wasn't grass, it was trees, tiny trees came up like a lawn, and eventually, the bigger trees outgrew the smaller ones, and today, we have a forest of rather large trees. And so the city has been offered by Mother Nature, a park, possible land of several acres, I want to say six or seven acres, can the city parks tell me if, how many acres Adrian's Island would consist of?
Thirty.
Yeah, Chuck, it is thirty.
Thirty acres, thirty acres. Now how many cities?
Yeah, roughly the size of Memorial Park, it's.
Uh-huh. Get offered thirty acres by Mother Nature, where there was no land before. A guy named Mr. Adrian, who owned the sand plant, I guess, filed a claim on the land and so forth. The second gift being offered to the city is from Mrs. BJ DeLong, who has generously offered several million dollars to build the bridge to give us access to Adrian's Island, so we would be remiss if we should decline such an offer of large funds. Yeah, I was going to mention, now I remembered Adrian's Island growing up, and I think the date was nineteen sixty-four, when those wing dikes were built, and the land grew up then, and while the land will flood, many parks are in flood plains. I lived in California for many years, and there are lots of city parks, county parks built inland that would otherwise be flooded. A park can stand a flood. You clean up afterwards, you remove sediment, dead trees, and so forth, and go on with life. Properties are not destroyed like it would be if homes were there. I have been out on Adrian's Island a couple of times, and enjoyed my look around, and it's a perfect place for a park. Nowhere else in Jeff City could you get such a beautiful view of the Capitol, standing on top of the cliffs, from basically the riverside, so it would be a wonderful resource for the city. I should mention, then, I grew up in Jeff City, once I got out of college, I went to another state to work, where my profession was more in demand, and after retirement, came back here, which is about ten years ago, and one of the very first things I did was see in the paper, some news of the possible park called Adrian's Island, so I came to city council and learned a little more about it. The next council meeting, I came and spoke regarding Adrian's Island, spoke in favor of such a park. That was back in twenty-ten, so here we are nearly ten years later, still talking about it, but with the kind donation from Mrs. DeLong, it looks like this thing may happen. So I would just ask us to remember how fortunate our two neighbor river cities are to have riverfront access, and I'm referring to Booneville and Herman. Herman has a beautiful city park right down at the river's edge, you can dip your toes in the water. Booneville has recently acquired, through great struggle, the old bridge there, and it's now to become part of their city park, they have built a nice access to it. So Jeff City deserves nothing less than a nice riverfront access park, so please support this bill. I should mention, I have offered my services more than once to the city or whoever else might be interested to help clear land out on city council, but I would point out that I have a business license with this city for removal of trees, so give me a call. And thank you all.
Thank you for your enthusiasm for the project, appreciate it. All right, and that is all that we have signed up for this evening, so we'll go on to item eleven, the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, Bill's introduced, twenty eighteen eighty-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Alternatives Funds.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, this is a time extension agreement with MoDOT, it's for a sidewalk project the city would be conducting on Missouri Boulevard, basically goes from Beck to Waverly Streets, which is where Chipotle is, to Sub Shop, if you're more familiar with that area, but it would allow us to retain these funds to bid the project by this June.
Any questions? Thank you. Twenty eighteen eighty-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period October one, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Just as clerk indicated, an agreement with Midwest ATC, they are our operator for the airport control tower, and the cost of this agreement's just approximately seventy-five-hundred dollars a month, which is only eighteen percent of the actual cost to have a manned tower there, the FAA picks up the remainder of it. The funds have been budgeted for this agreement.
Any questions? All right, thanks, Mr. Marash. Twenty eighteen eighty-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by adding a yield sign to McKay Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Citizen requests that came through our Transportation and Traffic Commission to add this yield sign at McKay Court, it's a neighborhood street, cul-de-sac.
Any questions? All right, twenty eighteen eighty-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by modifying sections G, J, and O.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is basically a staff cleanup ordinance, does a couple different things, but adds to the stop sign section, North Ten Mile Drive, and Tree Valley Lane, which Tree Valley Lane was Frog Hollow Road, so it's just basically a name change, name change there. It also adds parking on Miller Street over here by Central Bank, when they reconstructed the bank and the street there, they widened the street for parking, so this would allow, officially allow the parking there in the code.
All right, any questions? All right, twenty eighteen eighty-seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by modifying signage at the Mulberry Street, Elm Street intersection.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, another staff initiated change through Transportation and Traffic, but basically, as clerk indicated, modifying the stop sign to a yield sign on Mulberry Street and Elm. That area is receiving some upgrades to a bicycle connection route from the Greenway to downtown, and then on to the East Branch Greenway, so getting ready to do that, and modifying the signs to yields will help the traffic, bicycle traffic.
Any questions? All right, twenty eighteen eighty-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule F, through roadways, by the addition of Creek Trail Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, and saving these up. So another staff-initiated item, when Creek Trail was reconstructed and connected to Frog Hollow, became a through street, and we have a designation in the code for those that allows for determining which are the through streets in the area, that would indicate then, streets intersecting this street would have to yield.
Any questions? All right, twenty eighteen eighty-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a redevelopment agreement with Jefferson City Public School District.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This ordinance approves a redevelopment agreement with the school district. Primary function of this agreement is to set forth the city and county's participation through its joint sales tax, capital improvement sales tax, to build a road that connects Mission Drive to Creek Trail. It caps this participation at one-and-a-half million dollars, with that amount being split equally amongst the city and the county, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars each. It allows any savings from the project to be used on certain projects, particularly improvements to Union Street, Lewis and Clark Drive, and crosswalks at Thorpe Gordon and South Elementary Schools. Part of this agreement, the city will vacate Union Street over at Jefferson City High School, and will also vacate Lewis and Clark Drive, which is over at Lewis and Clark Middle School. This agreement reduces the building permit fees that the city would regularly receive by fifty percent. This results in a savings to the school district in an amount of approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars. The city is going to see some unspecified savings from no longer having to maintain or operate the roads over at Union Street or Lewis and Clark Drive, and the agreement certain other public improvements along with the connector street, particularly sidewalks along the west end and a pedestrian access to the neighborhood that is on the east side of the connector street. And so this agreement will approve that arrangement, or this ordinance would approve that arrangement. We also have upcoming an amendment to our agreement with Cole County, which would allow the addition of the Thorpe Gordon South Elementary Schools, Union Street, and Lewis &amp; Clark Drive, but that will be dealt separately in a upcoming agreement, but the county has approved the use of the joint sales tax money resulting in savings from the connector street project for those purposes. It's just a matter of finalizing the agreement to do so. So that's the basic outline of the agreement. If there's any questions on any specifics, I'd be happy to address them.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you, and now 2018-90.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a master license and cooperative agreement with Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation, and Bicentennial Bridge LLC.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This ordinance approves what I'm calling a master license and cooperative agreement between four entities. Those four entities are the City of Jefferson, the City of Jefferson Parks and Recreation Foundation, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission, and an entity known as Bicentennial Bridge LLC. Bicentennial Bridge LLC is wholly owned by the Chamber of Commerce. So what this agreement does, it sets forth a relationship between those four parties for the construction of the bridge to Adrian's Island. So primarily, one of the main functions of the agreement is granting a license from the city to Bicentennial Bridge LLC to enter onto city land to construct a bridge. And what that will allow them to do, it will allow the LLC to construct the bridge using money held by the foundation. So the foundation, the Parks and Recreation Foundation, is holding the money that was the result of the restricted gift agreement, which was approved previously by the city council, and also all donations that have been earmarked for Adrian's Island or bridge construction. And then the agreement also obligates the Parks and Recreation Commission to contemporaneously with the construction of the bridge to Adrian's Island, to develop a park on Adrian's Island itself. So each party to this agreement has a separate component and obligation to carry out the bridge project. Specifically, once the bridge is constructed, the agreement also sets forth a plan for maintenance of the bridge. The city and the Parks and Recreation Commission have identified about $700,000 in previously allocated capital improvement sales tax funds, and then other parks funds, which have been previously identified for riverfront access and park and trail development. And so of that $700,000, this agreement sets up a $300,000 bridge maintenance sinking fund, and so that fund will remain in place until it is depleted, and the Parks and Recreation Commission will be allowed to draw $10,000 a year from that bridge maintenance sinking fund to do daily, kind of day-to-day, general maintenance and upkeep of the bridge. And the agreement also sets forth, if it were ever needed, a situation where there had to be a withdrawal of more than $10,000 in a year, that withdrawal from that fund would require the approval of both the city council and the Parks and Recreation, so that there is an agreement that, yes, we need to repair, more major repairs of the bridge. The remaining money of that $700,000, a little short of $400,000, goes into what is called an island development fund. That money away from maintenance will be used to actually develop the park that will go on Adrian's Island, so that is, park development is a function of the commission. And so that's how, so this sets forth not only how is the bridge going to be built, but it also sets forth how is the bridge going to be maintained. Of particular note, the Bicentennial Bridge LLC will use a construction manager-at-risk method of project delivery, and essentially where they get a firm to manage the project and offer a guaranteed maximum price. They believe that this will create an efficient and known cost to get the bridge built, so that way, at the end of the project, there isn't, you know, money that is, more money wouldn't have to come up, because that particular model incorporates a maximum guaranteed price. While the bridge is being financed through private donations, the project will comply with items such as prevailing wage, prompt payment, OSHA certifications, work authorization under the Verifii program, certain types of statutes that would regularly apply to a public works project. This project will also comply with those statutes. And so that's a lot of information, and if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, I appreciate, we all do your extra work on this. It's a very unique project, something we haven't had, so I know you've worked hard to get this agreement, the four-way, and it's also, it really shows the value of all four partners in getting this project moving forward, so. And then the private donation piece, of course, is really amazing and instrumental in making this happen, so we're very appreciative of that and of staff's work in working with this four-way, and also to Parks, staff, and Parks and Rec Foundation and Parks and Rec Commission. So, all right, so any further questions? All right, so now we'll move on to item 13, bills pending. We've taken up 78 and 79. 2018-80.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $210,823 agreement with Donahue and Associates Incorporated for the Westview Pump Station upgrade and Basin Ten sewer evaluation.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Just as the Clerk indicated, it's a consultant contract with Donahue and Associates, and we're looking at replacing the Westview Heights pump stations near a park in that area, and the consultant will determine the best location for the new pump station and then also design that.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-81.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a redevelopment contract with the housing authority of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This ordinance approves a redevelopment agreement with the housing authority to convey Adrian's Island to the city. There is a $10 nominal fee that goes along with the conveyance, but otherwise, it is just a pretty direct conveyance of that property to the city.
All right, any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We've done 2018-82. We have nothing on the informal resolutions. We took up 24, so we'll do resolution 2018-25.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to apply for the Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Program grant.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This would, this resolution allowed the staff to apply for a grant administered by Missouri Department of Natural Resources. It's commonly referred to as the Volkswagen Trust Fund, where some funds are set aside to help folks in this particular grant application replace older inefficient vehicles. It'd be a 50/50-type grant. We looked at our fleet and determined we could apply for probably nine snowplows would be compliant with the grant requirements, so that 50% would be $345,000 of the city's share. That means we'll apply for that, doesn't mean we'll get that, or if we do, the city council will still have an opportunity to either accept those funds or some portion thereof.
All right, any questions? Roll call, please.
Got to the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion first.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 17, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. All right, and 18, under new business. Before we go.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Before we go into closed session, I wanted to thank everyone for such a great year, and wish everyone Merry Christmas with their families and friends, and be safe during this holiday season, so wanted to share that. And Councilman Graham.
I want to say the same thing, Madam Mayor, and also to also congratulate our colleague and my colleague in the field of education, Councilman Rick Mahalovich, on his retirement from State Technical College. So job well done, my friend. I look forward to seeing you out in the community and doing other things, so my best wishes to you and your endeavor, whatever you decide to do next, because I'm pretty sure you're not finished, so congratulations.
Wow, congratulations, Councilman Mahalovich. Yay, that's standing. You've been there for how many years?
Twenty-six and a half.
Wow, that is impressive. Well, you'll be missed, but congratulations to your future. That's wonderful.
And he's on a fixed income now, so he can't afford that $1,000 pledge, right?
He got the backdrop.
Well, speaking of that, I will be unavailable to attend the first meeting in January, January 7th, so Councilman Hussey will be filling in for me and running that meeting, so thank you, Councilman Hussey. I'm almost afraid not to be here, because I don't know what motions will be made for any kind of donations while I'm gone, so I'll keep that in mind. But with that, we will see you all next year, in the next year. So item 18, back to the agenda, new business. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
And we'll have, roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Got to read.
Oh, we need to read it first. I got ahead of myself. Sorry, I'm trying to get us too quickly here.
Pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, the Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: Legal action, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
And we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Motion passes.